Wow. All right, sorry about that. Okay. Thank you for coming to the school committee meeting tonight. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever. So, I understand we're still, we're having some technical problems, but we're going to work on that. And they've posted that, uh, to the audience at home that they're working on the fixing the broadcast. So unfortunately, you'll be on tape delay for your presentation. So first, comments from the community? Anybody here tonight that would like to address the school committee? Okay, seeing nobody, we will move on to Plymouth North High School Student Representative Report. Isabel.
I'm losing my voice a little bit, so. Um, so the Plymouth North Open House is held on Thursday, September 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00. So parents and guardians are invited to attend and learn more about their students' classes. And the class of 2017 should keep up to date with the Plymouth North yearbook and updates about that. We will also have some college lunch visits this month. So we'll have representatives from colleges and universities. We'll have over 150 visiting colleges. So that will be going on throughout the month. And the Farcity Homecoming Game is Friday, September 30th at 7:00 against Duxbury. And the dance is the next day, Saturday, October 1st. And tickets are on sale now until September 23rd. And they're $15 or $12 with two canned goods. International Testing, uh, National Testing Day is held on Wednesday, October 19th. So seniors will take the SATs and juniors and sophomores will take the PSATs. And Life Touch Sports Photos are on Friday, September 30th. And we'll also be having a meeting about the ball fair class rings on September 20th during K Block. Senior College Planning and Financial Aid Night is held on Wednesday, October 5th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at Plymouth South High School, right here in the cafeteria. And we ask that eligible students are registered to vote for the upcoming election. And we have the 2017 Prudential Spirit of Community Award. And people who are eligible should apply by November 8th. And we had seven Plymouth North students attend the Plymouth Walk to End Alzheimer's this past Saturday. So we'd like to thank those students. And then Fasten Night is on Tuesday, October 25th, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Megan, for South?
All right. The buses started this week and go until 4:15, and we have a lot of students taking advantage of it. We have inaugural trip planning and meetings going on for AP US History, AP Literature, AP Psych, and Panther TV. Our Open House is Thursday, October 6th at 7:00. All of our sports and other full games are in full swing. This Friday is Picture Day, and we also get our new student IDs that day. And it's also Election Days for Freshman Student Council. September 13th was our 9th grade fair where we had presentations for all our school clubs, and freshmen had the opportunity to sign up, and it was very successful. We, the students are getting excited for, by seeing the new progress from the field of the new school. And we also have a new a cappella program, starting with our new chorus teacher, Mr. Louisiana. And Mr. Fornishari wanted me to say this, and this, to reiterate, this will be the last school committee meeting in this cafetorium before the new building. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, both of you. Old business. I think all our old business is up to date. Anybody have anything they want to add to old business? Any updates? Yes, Dr. Sorensen.
I have a question. It'll, actually, it's in the minutes tonight when we approve the minutes for our, our all-day meeting that we had in August. One of the items on that, on those, in those minutes, we haven't addressed, and that is the discussion of failing grades across the, across the secondary level relative to, you know, the, we know what we're talking about, relative to really very low-grade first term, and then the student feels left out after that. And we understand from the little bit of feedback that we received at the committee table that there's an argument on both sides of that. So as far as I'm concerned, that issue is still unfinished business. And I guess my question is, is that going to come back to us at some time with a recommendation? Or are we going to have to? Any thoughts on that?
If I may, um, I believe, and we've had a great deal of discussion around this topic for quite a long time. We are going to work towards a recommendation for the school committee. But as you brought up, Dr. Sorensen, it's very difficult for a student who may have had a really bad first semester. And, you know, the issue that we were trying to resolve, or actually put on a proposal, was is there a minimum failing grade? And that's one of the things that we want to bring forward is what we would recommend as, what that would be. So we will have discussions and bring something to the table for recommendation.
Anything else in old business? I'm just going through it really quick. I think we have everything pretty much up to date. Good. Everybody's okay. Go to the next. Any new business? Anybody want to bring up anything new? I heard the "no." Okay. All right, then. Reports and proposals from the superintendent. You have a lot of news for us today.
Two items to report on. One of them is lengthy, and the other one is not. So, last week I had the opportunity, Tuesday, I left for Plymouth, actually for London, England. I went with a small delegation to the US Ambassador's home, Mark Barkham, and had the opportunity to meet with a large group of organizers from, from England, all the way from Birmingham to Plymouth, England, really looking at how we enhance the relationship that we have heading towards 2020. We talked about some significant developments that we're working on in partnership with the school department and Plymouth 400, as well as our partners in Plymouth. There are, there are three main pieces that we are working on, but there are many, many more to come. I think the, one of the most exciting ones is this Mars Unmanned Ship. That's what it's called, the Mars. And it's a, it's a ship that's actually going to be electronically controlled, that can actually sail from England to, to the United States. So that's one thing that's worked, that they're working on, and we are, we are going to be involved with that. And also, the big, the biggest one, size and actually newsworthy, is a Mayflower replica. So there is going to be a Mayflower replica built. It's actually, they just rented Space in Harwich, England, and they're actually going to start construction of a ship. It'll take two years to build, and they are working on building that. And they want to have the opportunity to work with our students as they go through that process. And probably the latest one that is very exciting for us, which is related to the Mayflower, is, is having a group of 3D modelers that work on some very high-end 3D virtual reality opportunities that are, this group is based out of Birmingham University in England. And what they want to do is that they came and visited us two days before I left to, actually, the week before I left to England. And I met with them while I was there to look, to see if we had an interest in having our students help with that 3D design of this virtual reality model. And after I took them through, Dr. Campbell and I took them through, and I had an opportunity to meet with them there. They were extremely excited to invite our students here in Plymouth to become involved in that, that design work and actually work on it over a two-year period of time to, to have students become involved in that, in that process. In addition, I had the opportunity to meet with the US Ambassador, and we've arranged, we will arrange in the, in the next week to a month, a Skype conference with him and some students from Plymouth to talk about the school district, talk about our plans for the 400th and what we're going to be doing. So we're very excited for that opportunity. He actually went to school in Lexington, Massachusetts, so that was a good connection that, that we had. And very influential in the United Kingdom as far as policy and as far as what's happening between the United States and, and England. So that was a great opportunity. So it went by very quickly, and I think we'll be hearing more from Michelle Picararo from the 400th, and also Selectmen Provenzano, I'm sure is going to report tomorrow night at the Selectmen's meeting on the discussions that we had. But it was very interesting, and I believe that you will start seeing more and more opportunities that are going to be brought forth to our students. And the last piece with that is Dr. Campbell and Dr., and Mr. Capel are going to be working once again to assemble a chorus that we'll be going over this next summer. They'll be singing with a large group of students from England. So we'll be planning that, and more information will come to the school committee. But it'll be a little different composure, or composition of performers, the different age groups, to be able to represent Plymouth and the 400th. So it was a pretty whirlwind opportunity, but I think it was very fruitful as far as what we do in the district and in the community for, for the 400th. Keep in mind that the community of Plymouth and the, and the country, they have put together a large contingent of, of people that are very motivated to have twinning opportunities between Plymouth, UK and Plymouth, Massachusetts. The community has hired a full-time person in Plymouth, England, to orchestrate the educational activities of the 400th relationship. She will be traveling here the second week of November, along with another partner that we've worked with in the past. So every opportunity that we can get for you to converse and to be part of meetings with them, we'd love the opportunity for school committee to be part of that. So I will inform you of what those dates are and what the agenda will be like, so you can actually hear more about what's happening in, in the UK. And the last item I have is, I'm not sure how many of you noticed this past week in the Voyager Express had a little different look and feel? It's actually changed to a mobile version, so you can actually look at it on your smartphone. We're also converting the Voyager to be two articles or two features from, from schools opposed to multiple features and less pictures, more content. And also, we've also inserted at, at the end of each school's section, there's their social media link, so they can go right to Facebook, Twitter, and to the, the webpage of each of our schools, right on that email that'll go out every Friday. So I actually had the opportunity to, to look at it right when it came out, and I thought it was much more user-friendly. And I, the, the data that we are collecting indicates that parents or users are actually using smart technology, smartphones, a lot more than they are desktop or laptop machines. So we figured we better change our format so it wouldn't be so cumbersome to read. And we hope that it'll, it'll make, make a difference for us in the long run. So that's my report for tonight.
Going on.
Yes.
That's good. I'm glad that we're tracking the users like that and reacting to the volume. That's good.
We actually do a great deal of analytic data review through the mechanism that we use. And we actually, a couple of years ago, we were featured at Plymouth, the Voyager Express was featured in a white paper from this vendor that we use because we had one of the highest open rates that they've had. But parents actually open the email they get, so it's pretty interesting. We actually click exactly where they go, what they like, what they don't like. Emily Gunn has really helped us to really break that, break that down, to really figure out where our, our best time to send this out and what people are spending their time on. Okay. Thank you.
And you know, when you do, take these trips, because the trips, I mean, you guys have got to see the pictures and stuff that go along with the trips. Should do a slide. Give us some slides and so for context and stuff.
I definitely will. That'll be a whole meeting.
Got the time. We only have one thing on the agenda. So, so it'd be good. Because some of the pictures you sent were very spectacular.
Those, well, it was a professional photographer, so it wasn't from my phone.
No correspondences today, right? No correspondence. And now we have our one program update for the night. We're, tonight, we're at Plymouth South High for the last time for a school committee meeting. We'll be in the new digs the next time.
Is she ready for Nancy?
Mm-hmm.
(inaudible)
Am I on?
I think so.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It says a green light. You can hear me. So I did say, Meg, that would be a nice thing to say, that it is the last time school committee will be here, and I'm hoping next year, when you take the school committee on the road, you'll be in a small group seminar in the new school. So we love Old South High School, but we're looking forward to the new South High School. And I heard this technical problem, so maybe we'll have that worked out by next year. So I am, Mark Fornishari, I'm the new principal of Plymouth South High School, if you didn't know who I am already. I was the vice principal last year, and now I'm the principal of this year. So there's been some changes with the school council members. For example, Mrs. Frye has now moved up, so I am now the principal and running the show for the school council members. But I just want to review who's on the council and where we're at with members. Mr. James Hanner is the CVTE principal. Mr. Chris Baker is a community member. We had a parent step down, so I'm in the process of finding another parent. Hopefully, we'll have something on Open House. We have Mr. Justin Kearney, a parent, and Mrs. Alicia Kearney, parent, who were on there last year. We have a teacher, Julie Osberg, social studies teacher. And we have, we have a spot for a teacher, as Mr. Frizzetti to my left got promoted to a half administrator teacher, part of our new look for this year. There's a lot of changes. James Addison, a student who's on it last year. Sarah Leary, who's a new student. Caitlin Natsu, who's not here, who's not in school today. And Mr. Patrick Powers on the bottom was, was kind of an ad hoc member. So that's the status of the council right now. And I'm working on filling all the spots. We've already set our monthly meetings. I'm new to this clicker. So the school improvement plan status, this is the mid-cycle review. And I want to say thank you to every, Central Office for my transition. Say thank you to my administrative team for this transition. And thank you to the council for, you know, meeting with me and working with me as I transitioned to the, to the new principal. It's, it's a very interesting job, and I'm glad I'm here. I love this place. But, you know, thanks to Mrs. Frye for sitting down with me on many different items, and especially with the school council, because it is, is new to me. So we're filling the new spots, like I said. We did have a brief school council meeting last week. We set dates and times for the upcoming year. It's, all, all the work is aligned with NEAS, which we have a two-year, no, not two-year, we have a report going on October 1st, which is being finalized. And we're in the mid-cycle of the school improvement plan. So tonight, we're going to share work done on what we've done so far and share goals for the future, and any questions for you tonight. So the school improvement plan has three, three goals. One of them is to continue the culture of success at Plymouth South High School. If you walk around this school, the culture is the murals, the positive attitude, the way we are very, I think we're very happy we create that positive environment. In addition, the number of the new CBT programs will be modified for the, for the, for the school upcoming year, next year. Number two, enhance student understanding involvement in their overall wellness that we're working on. We have reporting out what we did last year. And number three is re-engaging the disengaged student, and Ms. Osberg will talk about that. Goal number one is that continue a culture of success to work ensure a smooth transition to the new South in September. As I work with Mrs. Frye, because she still works with the building committee and the new school, it's, it's very interesting that moving this entire building and the atmosphere to the new school is kind of a, is a very important thing. We want people to walk in there and feel the same that they do here. And we've been working on many different things. And one of the things we've been working on is the documentation and the submitted to the DEC for the new CBT programs, which Mr. Hanner can talk about.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Frye and I were fortunate to meet with representation from the Department of Vocational Technical Education at the DESE, probably almost two and a half years ago, to present to them the model that we'd like to move forward with, with some of the constrictions that we had with Space. As we all know, the MSBA was pretty specific about our square footage. So we came up with a couple of different plans, of which were some clustering models. That also included us adding two programs that will be presented to our liaison in the spring of this school year. And those programs are HVAC and medical assisting. Our goal is to use the space wisely and to create a construction cluster, an automotive technology cluster that will also branch off of the auto tech program and also add to that auto collision and repair. So two standalone, in a sense of medical assisting by itself, within the construction cluster, the HVAC, and that'll be with plumbing and carpentry. And then the transportation cluster, as I mentioned, the automotive technology and auto collision repair. The auto collision, we've already started, and so that's not going to be brand-new that we've rolled that out here in the new building. All the documentation will be sent forward, including to match our educational philosophy that Mrs. Frye presented to the MSBA. It'll also match the requirements for new program approval. And the biggest obstacle that we will have is to provide staffing. So we're confident that we will be able to move forward with that, and we expect an onsite review in the new building before November 1st of 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Hanner. One of the other things that they've been working on in our CBTE that Mr. Baker's been closely working on is all the equipment's not going to be new over at the new school. And Mr. Baker has been working with Mr. Hanner about how they're going to move, classify, and reuse equipment. So he's been working closely with that.
Basically, the, the equipment topic is going on since the very beginning. So it's, all the equipment that's being reused and repurposed is, is already been identified in the very beginning of the process. At this stage in the game, that equipment is stuff that we're using currently in shops every day to teach kids. So it's not like we can just pick it up and stick it over to the side there. The, the equipment has to be, at this stage, has all been identified. We have a spreadsheet for where it's going and where it's going to be placed. And they'll be using that pretty much up till the end of the school year. So that equipment's all part of their, the training process now. But it's all been identified and marked, and whatever services need to be done is all part of what we do anyways. The reason we're able to take so much equipment with us is that we have done, we try to do a really, really good job of servicing, maintaining, keeping stuff up to snuff. That's really part of our coordinated program review, and that's done through vocational, through the Chapter 74 process, that equipment needs to be maintained and taken care of and logged. So all that equipment's marked and will be taken with us. As soon as some pieces come out, that kids are done with certain cycles, if they're not going to be using it for the remainder of the school year, at that point, we'll disconnect it, get it wrapped up, and do whatever service we needed to do so it's ready to go. And that's pretty much what that process is about.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. There's also a timeline that I've worked with Mrs. Frye and the, some of the technology of, that some of the technology will be moved, but it's going to be right up until the end. Teacher's going to be able to teach right up until we move. There's a plan that we have been worked on with Mrs. Frye. So it's very deliberate what we're doing to make sure that everything, there's still teaching going on right up until we have to move out of Old South to New South. One of the other things that is, is going to be happening is the idea of keep bringing the culture of this school over to the new school. And part of that is through an art project that Mr. Frizzetti has been working closely with.
Good evening. I'm happy to report that, you know, one of our main focuses in bringing the culture, we have a tremendous artistic culture here at Plymouth South High School that we're very proud of. And we have two art teachers, Mrs. Quinn and Mrs. White, working on a art sculpture that will hang in the grand staircase of the new building. You know, it's, it's going, it's going to harness the light that comes into the building. You know, obviously, it's, it's no, it's no secret that one of the, one of the main focuses of, of the new school is going to be how much light we get. There's some days that I come to work here at 6:30 and don't know what it looks like outside until I leave at 4:00. So we're really excited about all the new light features at the new school. So this sculpture will, the art teachers are working with the architects on the new building to ensure a hanging sculpture that will, that will harness light and really, you know, let our students' artistic abilities shine through and, and really make that, that grand staircase a focal part of our, of our new building. I'm also happy to report that Panther TV and Adam Smith are starting a digital capture of Plymouth South High School with ideas from a student, I mean, student and staff survey that we had here at the high school. It's important that we record everything that has really given this building, you know, a life of its own. And so many things that, you know, although we're happy to move to the new building and we look forward to doing it, you know, starting in June, we start moving things over, but we're, you know, there's a lot of things that we want to take with us from this building, the culture, the people, and there's a lot of wonderful things that have happened, happened here that we don't want to just forget about. So we have a, you know, a digital capture that's going to, you know, hopefully run on a loop in the new building, maybe in the main foyer. So people that come into the building not only, you know, see our great, our great new facility, but also realize that, you know, we're not going to forget where we came from. A lot of, you know, a lot of people have done some great work here over the years, and we want to make sure that the work that was done here in this building, and what makes this place so special, like this cafetorium, all of those, all of those memories come with us to the new school. So hopefully, you know, we're going to, we're going to start doing that digital recapture very shortly, so I'm, I'm happy to report that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Frizzetti. One of the other things that came up in the meeting was talking about not only the hallways and all the artwork in the hallways, but some of the teachers have made their classrooms a unique place. You know, some of the teachers don't have windows, and they've created a environment that is a positive learning environment. So we also talked about getting into some of these classrooms and videotape and what's, what happened in these classrooms to transform them. I just worked on this today, develop a student change committee. I reached out to the guidance councils to have recommendations for people on a change committee. So that's in the process to talk about certain things we're going to do this year through the students' views. Change is hard. I've been here, I think, 23 years. This is my second home. And we're doing some intentional PD on Wednesdays, our first in-service. We're going to meet, and we're going to discuss change and what people like about Plymouth South, because there's a lot to like about this building. And there's a lot of fear of a new home. I actually went on Google and looked up when you're moving, your house move, certain 10 things to make it easy. And a lot of it is just what we're going to do. You know, have a plan, don't stress out, clean up the clutter, take an inventory. So it is like moving from a house, but it's kind of in a bigger scale. So we're going to start that on Wednesday, the PD. And one of the activities, I'm sorry, I'm not keeping up. One of the activities is different types of personalities, deal with different types of change. of change. And one of the activities, and we've done this activity before, and it's, it's fitting for this, it's how we deal with change. For example, I'm probably a North person, just let's do it. I'm, I'm all in, let, I'm, I'm happy to do it. But there are other personalities that might need to know a plan and go about it slow. So we're going to do this activity this Wednesday to talk about how people can deal with this change and what we have to do. We're also going to talk about what curriculum people need to take and stuff like that. So that's what our PD is on Wednesday. Goal number two is focused on the overall wellness. And one of the things we did, I don't know if anybody got a chance to come and see him last year, was Chris Herring, very powerful speaker. He's been to South twice. And if you saw him the first time, you, the second time was totally different than what he talked about the first time. And we did have the parents, some of the parents show up and like them to talk about their experience seeing Chris Herring.
We did attend. It was a very powerful emotional speech. The whole backstory of it's not going to happen to me, but it did, and how it affected his life, and more importantly, the life of everyone that came in contact with him. So it was a very, very good presentation.
While we were standing, like, sitting in the audience, the one thing that I grabbed from it is all the students were captivated by him. And I think anybody who can do that is an amazing speaker. So they were taking something from it. And you could listen, and you could hear different sounds and emotions being present. But his words were so amazingly powerful. Not only did it affect the students, it affected staff. So he, he just did some amazing things. And just after his presentation was over and just talking and hearing other people, you know, talking about the event was just powerful. I think this is an amazing thing for our students and our children. They need to hear about these life events and that it can happen to anybody. You can, you can be just, you know, an average person, or you could be somebody who's an amazing, you know, athlete like he was. And just something so simple like that can just completely turn your life upside down. And I think a lot of the students took something from this. And I think it's a great way to have the kids hear from somebody else. So I really like that this occurred, and I hope more events like this happen through the school.
One of the things we did for Chris Herring is, we couldn't put everyone in the gymnasium, but we did have a live feed to all the classrooms. So the entire student body saw it. And I think they got the same feeling, even though they were in a classroom watching it live. And I think Sarah was in a classroom, and she's going to tell how, how it went with her and how she felt about it.
So being a student, from the student perspective, I think Chris Heron was something that, as a student, I've never really seen before, because from a very young age, it's hammered in our heads, you know, not to do drugs. But to a point, that almost gets glazed over, because you just hear it so many times throughout your life. And I'm only 16, and it's still, it's always in the back of your head, but it's just, it's said so much that you just, it just gets glazed over. So I think Chris Heron, one of the most persuasive parts of his speech was that it, he wasn't really trying to be persuasive. He was just kind of telling his story, and everybody was glued to his, every single word. Everybody just was hanging on each and every word that came out of his mouth. And I think that was why he was so persuasive. He connected to the audience in a way that nobody's really connected to us before. He talked a lot about his social life and how, and it was almost identical to each and every student's at the school. He talked about his love for sports and being an athlete. I think we all connected to that as well. So overall, I think Chris Heron did a great job, simply because he was just a guy telling his story. And I think that was really, that meant a lot to each and every student.
Thank you. One of the goals is to look at another speaker. I don't know if you've ever heard of Mike Smith, very powerful speaker, trying to look into get Mike Smith to come and speak to the entire student body. He's also, he's, he's a different type of speaker. He tells a story, what type of a person he is and what he became. The other thing that we, we did was we intentionally put out programs to parents. For example, The Secret Life of a Teen, If Only, Drugstore Theater, and Social Media Speaker that Dr. Miestas had. I get things daily that I promote out to the staff, students, and parents. I just went to a PYDC meeting, and I got a lot of information that can go out now to parents about overall wellness and how the community has come together to try to make sure that the teenagers are safe and getting the right message. Goal number three, I know a lot of people work really hard on goal number three, it's re-engaging the disengaged student. And the data has shown that getting this student re-engaged in the freshman year is a pivotal year. Mr. Larranger, the freshman house vice principal, has worked closely with doing a lot of data research and doing things on re-engaging that student, because he's learned that if you can get that freshman hooked, their freshman year, that school's important, and make it happen, that it carries over to the rest of the career in high school. Mrs. Osberg, who's on the Freshman Academy, will discuss some of the things they do for the freshmen to keep them engaged.
So like Mr. Fornishari said, I'm a social studies teacher on the Freshman Academy. I've been there, this is my seventh year now, so kind of I'm familiar with, very familiar with the ins and outs of, of what we do for the freshman students here. A couple of things that have come up in the past few years, excuse me, that are, are on the newer side. Mr. Larranger has put in a Strategies for Success night for both parents and students to come. We invite them to come to the school. And we have guidance counselors there, Mr. Hannah is there. We have Ms. Jen Dusso who is there, who does a lot of work with Aspen and kind of teaching the parents and the students, the ins and outs of Aspen, just so that everybody is on the same page. The teachers, the parents, the, the students, we're, we're all on the same page, which hopefully, and typically does lead to success. We had, as Megan said earlier, a, an assembly for the freshmen to come and check out all of the clubs that we have to offer at Plymouth South. And I thought that was kind of interesting to kind of see what different kids are gravitating towards. And you can often tell the athletes, they wear their jerseys to school and things like that. So, so you don't worry about them so much being engaged in the school, but it's the kids who don't. And I thought this club fair was a really, really good way to show the kids who aren't interested in sports that you can still be involved in your school in different ways. I had one student come up to the freshman student council table, and I asked if she was interested, and she said, oh, no, this isn't for me. And I said, oh, well, did you find something that was? And she rattled off at least five different clubs that she was interested in going to. And I thought that was great. She knew who she was, and she knew what she liked, and, and she saw that Plymouth South had something for her. The other thing here that was new last year, we had an assembly where certain ninth grade students were invited to, it's ninth grade students that the teachers had felt needed a little bit of a push, getting their work done and getting it together their freshman year. So they were invited to an assembly backstage. And one of the most powerful things, I think, that came out of that was there was a senior student there who struggled their freshman year, and then throughout her high school career, got it together. And she spoke to those students in a very direct way that I think got to the point. And I think that it's important to get a student like that for these, for these kids, because they can see, like, oh, she was like me, I can do it too. So I think that was a pretty positive thing overall. And I think just these small things, homework club is another thing that we do for the Freshman Academy. And I think it's just giving them the tools that they can then use their sophomore, junior, and senior year, and showing them where, you know, if you do struggle, this is where you can go to help, and there is something here for you at, at South.
Thank you, Ms. Osberg. There's a, a big focus on the freshmen, but we do not lose sight of the sophomores, the juniors, and the seniors. We have things that we have, like CST with guidance and admin meet, and we talk about other students. I like to take a hands-on approach with the kids, because I, I love this place, and I love the kids. And the other day, I just want to tell you that a guidance counselor said, you need to come see this student right away. Has, is already started with an attendance problem. And that's what's great about South, how we collaborate, and people know certain people to go to, to talk to these kids. And I went and dropped whatever I was doing, I went and saw this student, and I know him. And I said, we need to figure out to make sure you're coming to school and you're doing what you're supposed to do. And I left with a pause, and he's like, Mr. Fornishari, I will do my best. But that's what I love about our school, is it, it is a lot of focus on the freshmen, but as sophomores and juniors, guidance counselors take a very, very positive role, and will go seek out people to get the disengaged student engaged, whether it's a coach, whether it's Mr. Hannah, Mr. Baker, or a teacher, or a adjustment counselor. So it is very freshman-focused, but it does not stop after freshman year. I think it becomes more individualized as they grow older and they get in different shops. One of the things that if you, you, Dr. Sorens did talk about old business was, what happens is this personal, individual goal-setting meeting that Mr. Larranger does with students. And if you notice that this student has had a low grade, and what he does is he meets with students, and he gives them, hey, this is what you can do to pass for the year, this is what you can do to make it for the year. And he's very, very diligent about it. He meets with them, he gives them the information, he meets with them again. And it's that discussion that Dr. Sorens, and I believe you, you had at your meeting about the low first-term grade, that's always become a discussion because of students say, well, why try? Because look at how bad I did first term. But Mr. Larranger sits down with them, tells, tells them it's not lost, and he has great success with that. Which, if you look at the next slide, is the grade nine retention data? And if you can look at how the data has progressed, with all the strategies that have been put in place for Freshman Academy meetings, different seminars, that last year, there were only four students that were retained. And by retained means is they went back to full, they're back on a team. We have some students that don't make sophomore status, but that might be 2.5 credits, because they might have, didn't pass PE or something like that. But last year, the Freshman Academy only had, this year only had four retained. And that's what, because of the Freshman Academy model, what Mr. Larranger does and what the teachers do, the guidance councils and all the administrators. So that is a very good success. And I, I know Coach Larranger is going to try to make this year, he wants a zero up there. So I, I know him, so he'll probably, he'll probably get it done. Strategies for the future, social media, safety, and appropriateness with students. I actually did, I had to write my first letter to the parents, and I spoke about this in the letter, talking about social media and, you know, talk to your son or daughter, because one click of the button can change lives forever. So we're working on different things for social media. Electronic communication with students, it's very interesting that we communicate, teachers communicate, administrators communicate, but it seems that everyone has their own idea of, of what platform they want to use, remind, email, blogs, Twitter. And we're starting thinking about how we can focus on maybe getting teachers to use only certain things. We wouldn't want to limit them, but it does get interesting how many students have different ways of communicating with teachers. We're going to continue with our personal connection with students through guidance, administrator, and teachers. I still, as a principal, am still doing advisory. The advisory program is very important. I did set it up so I have a co-teacher with me, just in case. But I have the same kids for the last three years, and it's what we believe in here at South. I believe in the advisory program. I'll always have an advisory as administrator, just to reconnect with the kids. One of the last things that we're going to talk about, and I left the best for last was James, is we transitioned to a new South athletic field. And as things change around here, student, the way students see things change, and we had, you know, we had a stadium I thought was very nice, but now it's even nicer. And James is going to talk about that transition to the new stadium and, and what the environment and how the kids feel.
So as a player, I think the stadiums, like, the new field in the stadium, it's like really complete now, because like, last year we had grass, and like, that made like football games like really muddy and dirty, and there's like some bumps that like you might roll your ankle on. But now it's really consistent as a field, and it's like really fresh and positive. And I think players and coaches really enjoy the new turf. And I also believe that the community likes the whole new, complete stadium as well, because last, or the opening football game, there's probably like 1,500 people at the home opener, it was crazy. And so like, it's really powerful to see how all the, like, the entire community comes together for like this one, like, unique event for the football team. And it means a lot, because like, it's based off like this new field. It's like, it's only a turf field, but it means so much.
Actually, James, I didn't save you for last, because I know Sarah wanted to talk about. Sarah's on the dance team, and it's not just affecting athletics, what's going on out there, it's also dance and cheer.
So I remember last year for the Thanksgiving game, the North versus South Thanksgiving game that goes on every single year, it was, I don't want to say it was downpouring, but it was definitely drizzly. And, you know, when dirt gets wet, it turns to mud. And of course, the North dance team and the South dance team were not prepared to stand on their tippy toes in mud. So half the times, we were on our backs, and we got off the field, and we were all just covered in dirt. And so I can speak for everybody when I say it's a heck of a lot easier to be on turf and dance on turf and cheer on turf, because it was just, it was, it was difficult last year. So that's, that's definitely a beneficial improvement.
Thank you, Sarah. I just want to say thank you to the parents, thank you to, to the committee. And do you have any questions?
Let me, let me tell you the story behind the story on the turf. You don't just have turf, you have one of the highest quality turfs that are made. And the way that happened was, we didn't have the money, as a building committee, Mrs. Burgess and I sit on the building committee, to buy this top-quality turf. And we got a letter from the manufacturer telling us halfway through the process that he was retooling his plant, because he, he didn't want to make the inexpensive turf anymore. And he would offer us this high-quality turf for just a small increase in price, and the building committee went for it. So it's not just turf, it's high-quality turf.
Thank you.
Having served on the council for South last year, we spent a good deal of time talking about the disaffected student, the student who comes to school only because they have to. And you said a couple of things here tonight that I really feel near and dear to, that is reaching out to the student through the clubs, reaching out to the student by meeting with somebody twice a week that it says right here, you know, in terms of the grade thing. This is the way, we all know this, this is the way to keep a student from dropping out at 16, by giving him a connection with somebody or some people. So I applaud you, keep it up, I think it's great work. Sorry about that.
Very good. And I'll just say, I, I mentioned this our last meeting, I was at the first game on the new field. And if you listen to the people sitting in the stands, the, the public loves it. You can just feel it, you can feel the energy and everything, so that's, it's great. It was a great, great day, and I'm glad that you're enjoying it so much. It's all worth it, when you hear that, right? Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Campbell.
Updates in your fundraising since last week, since it was posted on Wednesday. I will tell you that we have a stack of requests that have come in since it's been posted, so you can anticipate seeing a greater amount of new so you can anticipate seeing a greater amount of new fundraising requests in there for our next meeting.
Very good. Anybody have any questions or feedback? Ms. Hunt?
I just want to say, I went to the Booster Club meeting this, this week and it was great that they went through and reiterated all of the rules of fundraising. And it was good for me to hear that because, you know, we do get presented with it. And I know at least at North, they were very, very thorough with the rules and what had to be done. And they talked about the car washes and the water shortage and, and just, just the rules in general, they reiterated about the coaches not taking money and, and only the parent reps. So I just, I appreciated being there and hearing it from the other side.
You didn't say something?
No, I'm good.
Want to, but you're not sure.
Well, I was just going to say, sorry, as a fundraising aside, I have a friend who coaches at another school. And they did their car washes, but they, they didn't do the car wash themselves, they got coupons for a later date. So I don't know if these kids, if that's something that the teams might be able to do, I don't know, for the spring.
I think many of those clubs were looking to do other, other fundraising activities. So I don't think they had a shortage of ideas.
Yeah. I know soccer sent out a new one. They canceled their car wash and now they're doing a bowling.
Yep. And I think we had two other car washes too on the list that have since come up with other ideas, but that is a good suggestion for the future. If we, hopefully we don't have another water ban in the future, near future.
I closed my sheet. Was there anything for candy sale, for like chocolate bars? Because I don't have any kids in the school system and I'm kind of hooked on them.
Do you need some chocolate?
The chocolate bars, I like the chocolate bars. I bought like hundreds of them over the years and I like them.
There is. There's volleyball.
So anyway, somebody could hit. If they would come by the next meeting.
I'm with North volleyball. They have candy.
It's all right.
Get some cookie fundraisers, those are yummy too.
PYDC? Oh, I'm sorry, I kind of jumped there. Did anybody have anything they wanted to report? We only met a week ago, but any meetings or anything attended that you want to give me any? Okay. PYDC, we don't have anything. I don't think, they're meeting this Friday, right?
We had a meeting last Friday, so I'm sure, right. So I'm sure the notes from that meeting will be transcribed by the recorder and most likely be on the next meeting agenda.
Okay, good. Jump right in, Ms. Hunt.
I actually, with another, I was volunteering at my son's college this weekend and a former teacher of, Plymouth school teacher, Mrs. Franks, is now in charge of the Massachusetts Maritime Academy Follow the Voyage. And I told her that I would mention it here for everybody to know that they do have a curriculum based around their sea term. And Michelle, Ms. Badger might be able to talk more about it, but I did promise her that I would mention it at this meeting, that she is now in charge of that for the entire school. That's her, her job. And just to encourage all the teachers in the district to look into it. It's a great opportunity, especially with Plymouth being so close to Mass Maritime Academy, the cadets can go there and actually speak to the classes afterwards. So I just, like I said, I promised her that I would mention that after, after meeting with her this weekend.
Very good.
Huh? She's, she's jumped in full with both feet to the, she's an officer in the Parents Association. So she, but she is in charge of the Follow the Voyage, which is a really exciting program.
Building committee. Did we meet?
I made, I made it last week.
Yep.
Not for another month.
Appointments, leaves of absence, and resignations. Mrs. Frye.
We don't have any retirements tonight, but we have three certificated appointments, three classified appointments, and four resignations. So it's a little lighter than it has been in the past year.
Very good, thank you.
We're still going though.
Now the homeschool, Dr. Maestas.
Yes, tonight we have one homeschool plan that is on the agenda for school committee approval. It has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, meets all the necessary guidelines for homeschooling education in Plymouth, and I recommend your approval tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
We accept it, it is presented.
And seconded by Dr. Sorensen. Everybody sync if you're not synced.
I don't see it.
Top of the screen. You have to go on, go to the agenda.
Got to join the meeting.
Oh. There we go, okay. Everybody's bothered. Wow, it worked.
Accounts payable warrant, Ms. Badger.
Where the school committee members have provided with a copy, with a copy of the costs and our transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S092216 dated September 22nd, 2016 in the amount of $570,635.84 as presented.
Motion, do I have a second? Mrs. Burgess seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, 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 wait.
I'll get used to it, I'll get used to it. It's going to take a little while. Got it? Got it? Good. Very good. I did get half of you as voting with your hand though. Just went right into the momentum of it. Yes, Dr. Sorensen, you want?
The thought just crossed my mind that when we vote electronically, the viewers on TV don't know how we're voting.
They see it.
Well, wait, let me go on. They know how we vote after we vote. So if I'm going to vote no on something, it just feels like there's no dialogue. I guess, no, I guess there would be dialogue. If I'm going to vote no on something, I'll speak up to it, but I don't have to speak up to it.
Because I'll always ask for discussion.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay, all right.
Now tonight, when there's technical difficulty, they're not seeing it. So they don't know if that just passed. That did pass unanimously.
School committee meeting that is, that is being recorded tonight will air tomorrow morning.
Okay, good.
And then they will have a cycle on the list of when it will cycle through.
Good. For all those folks that are hanging out there, just.
Yes, just waiting.
Waiting for it. Okay, let's start through the minutes. Then we have August 1st. Ms. Hunt?
I actually left during Ms. Bachmann's presentation, so I don't know if that needs to be noted, or do I abstain from voting where I wasn't here for the whole time?
You don't have to abstain because you were here for most of the meeting, but Mrs. Dargy usually mentions that.
Yeah.
Somebody departed, you know, left the meeting or something. So we might want to just make a note of that.
That, and there's just a really small typo in the beginning, there's a G missing from Long, for Long Pond Road.
Which, very good.
Really, Long.
Ah, Long, okay. Very good. So then, do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept the minutes with the corrected changes.
Very good. And seconded by Ms. Badger. I'm not going to say it. And all vote?
No discussion?
Any discussion? If not, vote. It's breaking my rhythm.
Okay.
Late.
Did you vote?
Yep.
There it goes.
Yep, there it goes.
Thank you. Now the minutes for August 6th, our retreat. Yes. I note that Mrs. Trusselli wasn't at the last, that meeting, so she should have abstained from the vote. We need to change that to an abstain.
Chairman, we can actually revoke that if you choose to.
Sure. All right, let's back up.
All right, now the motion was made by Mrs. Hunt, correct? Seconded by Mrs. Badger.
Ms. Badger.
And I'm going to release it for her vote again, so please vote here.
We're going to vote again, we're going to vote again on it. So everybody want to vote? There we go. Very good.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
And now August 6th, which was our retreat. Ms. Badger?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
And Mrs. Hunt seconded it? Any further discussion? Then we will vote. Takes us, there's like a little delay. I didn't see the results on that last one.
I, okay.
Okay.
I saw it.
I saw it.
That's good. If you saw it, it's good.
Yep.
Then, now we're on the executive session for the retreat.
Will they be accepted as presented?
Thank you. Dr. Sorensen moves them. Seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? Then let's vote. Oops. Oops.
No, I may have to get rid of this. Not so quick.
There you go. Very good.
Yeah, that time you're sitting.
There's a little delay, I think.
We're getting out really good.
Disposal of equipment. Dr. Maestas.
Yes, tonight we have three ice machines that have been discarded or are here tonight to be discarded from Plymouth North High School. These are three ice machines that were found to have some defects in them. And they were actually producing ice that had some level of nasty stuff in it. So it was discoloring the ice.
They're taken offline?
Yes, they're offline.
Do we have?
Were the machines brought over from the old Plymouth North or were they purchased for the new school?
No, these were, these were actually machines that were purchased when North opened. And the company that we was, that was specced and purchased went out of business.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Badger?
We approve the discarding of these three ice machines.
Second, Mr. Morgan? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote electronically. Good. All right, next one. And that was it? Wow. 8:02, I think that's the earliest night for you, right? Okay. I promised you that there wouldn't be some all long nights, but. So without objection then, we're adjourned.